Welcome to the May 7, 2015 meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. And on National Prayer Day, Vice Mayor Young has our prayer.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Young. I'm going to turn the podium over to Mr. Godwin, and we have several Stars winners we're going to talk about tonight.
Good day, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of the Murfreesboro City Council. I am very excited, delighted, and have the high privilege of being able to introduce our Stars Award-winning group and team this evening. And this team is also represented by a number of members of family members, so we welcome guests and family as well. I would point out before I turn it over to Mr. Gore that this is one of the groups of employees who have won the Stars Award as a team. There are eight employees who won this award at the wastewater treatment plant, the Sinking Creek Plant, under the direction of Mr. John Strickland. Everyone on this team has met and exceeded the Stars Award criteria for creating value of delivery and value of service, and has exceeded those standards. So without any further ado, I will turn this over to Mr. Gore. Mr. Gore?
Thank you, Mr. Godwin, Mayor, council members. It's always a pleasure to get up here when we have a Stars Award winner in the department. I know other departments have them, but it's just a special privilege for me. And before I'm going to name everybody, and wives and children here in a minute, but I wanted to real quickly just say what a significant accomplishment this team made. This was a grassroots effort at the wastewater plant, the Sinking Creek Wastewater Plant, where these gentlemen, it was an operator-driven initiative. I actually found out about it several months into the initiative. They told me after they had already started it. In effect, it's a, it was an advanced nutrient removal initiative that, quite honestly, without it, we would not currently have our permit to expand our Sinking Creek Plant. So there was some providential nature to this. It demonstrated great courage, because there was substantial risk involved in making these changes. This has taken a plant that was running no problems, but it was trying to optimize it. And there's fish in these streams. And if there's a hiccup, there can be some damage. But these gentlemen took the bull by the horns, so it had a powerful impact. And quite honestly, it saves about $132,000 annually in power costs as well. So I think it was a, there's a special little magic that goes on when you've got great relationships in the teams, and trust is developed, and it allows you to take those risks. It allows you to be nimble and to move forward on some things that are a little bit scary, because you know people have your back. I know the Water and Sewer Board has my back. I know the council has our back. It's a privilege. It allows you to extend yourself, take on things that maybe you normally wouldn't take on. So I'm going to introduce these folks. I want them to keep going. We've got challenges to go. We've got about a 10 to 15-year buffer. Then we're going to have to keep, we're going to have to get another innovative paradigm shift somewhere. So John Strickland, plant manager, his wife's Melanie, whoever wants to come up, please come up. We've got Josh Smith with his wife, Callie, Josh Lemay. We have Darryl Williams with his wife, Bryce, and daughters, Diamond and Darryl Lynn. Patrick Dwyer, come on up, Patrick. Somebody come up. You guys, come on, come on, folks. Tony Patterson with his wife, Teresa, Mr. Chuck Lemay. We have Anthony Pollak here with his father, Brian Pollak, and his girlfriend, Samantha. And I would be remiss, Mr. Kent Brothers is not here, because he is at the plant working tonight, so second shift. So he, somebody, somebody had to stay at the plant. But I want to thank you all very much for this honor.
Josh? Congratulations, Josh.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Mr. Pollak? Congratulations. Great job.
Mayor, let's give him.
Yes.
Hold the plaque a little bit. Stay there. Let's do it again. All right, let's get this guy. There we go. Now we're on track.
Tony? Congratulations.
That's good.
Josh, congratulations, man.
Thank you, sir.
There we are.
Joe? Congratulations. Patrick?
Thank you.
Congratulations, man. Karen?
Thank you. Thank you.
Gentlemen, on behalf of the city council, and I know the staff, we want to let you guys know how much we appreciate what you do, what you've done, and what you'll continue to do on a daily basis on making sure that one of our most precious resources, you know, without water, and then also, not many people realize, without disposal of wastewater, how important that is to our community. So we were driving by last night on Cherry Lane, or Leanna Swamp Road, going to the soccer field, and my three-year-old was pointing "water, water." And I was like, "No, that's not water. That's a fluid." But anyway, he thinks it's pretty water. So anyway, thank y'all for what you do, and we really appreciate, on behalf of the city, your hard work. And for family members, thank y'all for sharing them with us during the day. So, and now. So thank you.
Did you give John Strickland?
No, John? He was wonderful, wasn't he?
Well, I know he's the plan here, but I didn't know if he'd answer to it.
All right. You've got a very lengthy consent agenda in front of you. Are there any questions with anything that's on the consent agenda?
Rob, on item G, on the contract for bulk fuels and stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
Could you just give me an update as to how we're doing budget-wise with fuel prices dropping? I'm assuming we're doing much better?
Yes.
And is that being reflected in this contract as well?
Yeah. The fuel contract that you have, because, you know, it's a commodity that changes daily, is pegged off of an index number.
That's correct.
When it's bid out, the vendors add so many cents per gallon over above the index price, so that's what we'll pay. But, you know, because the price of fuel has come down so much this year, our budget numbers look great in terms of fuel.
About how far out is that index number? I mean, how, how long does it take for us to react?
Well, it's published daily.
Okay.
So on the day you order fuel, they'll look at the index that day. If they added two or three cents to the bid on that day, they'll add it three cents to the index price. And when you order tomorrow, we'll have to go look at what the index that's published.
That's fantastic. That shows that we're saving the taxpayers' dollars on a daily basis as we buy that fuel with the lowering prices. So that's good. Thank you.
Great question.
Did Mr. Gore have a presentation?
I don't know.
Is he gone?
Probably took his PowerPoint with him. All right, any questions?
Here are no more questions. I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Kells Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll move to third readings. We'll consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15027, amending Murfreesboro-
Wait, wait, wait. You skipped-
I'm sorry. I skipped the minutes. I apologize. I put a big check mark next to the minutes right here. Sorry. You have two meetings in front of you for minutes. April 16, 2015, special meeting, and the April 16, 2015, regular meeting. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Kells Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Well, now I'll move to third readings. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15027, amending Murfreesboro City Code Appendix C, City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Employees' Revised Pension Plan, Article 10, Pension Committee, Section 10.01, Committee Members.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Kells Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to second readings and consider for passage on second reading ordinance 150Z23, to rezone an area located west of Memorial Boulevard to Highway Commercial CH District.
Move for passage. Second.
I have a motion of second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Kells Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 150Z24, to rezone an area in Salem Creek subdivision, south of New Salem Highway, to single-family residential 12, RS 12 District, single-family residential 15, RS 15 District, and single-family residential 10, RS 10 District.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Kells Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Well, consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15025, amending Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A, Zoning, Sections 24, 26, and 27, regarding separation of and landscaping between building and drive-up-through lanes.
Move for passage.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Kells Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Move to first readings. Consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15026, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 4, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 3, Beer, and Article 4, Nudity on Premises.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I come before you to present ordinance 15-026 regarding beer and nudity on premises serving alcohol within the city of Murfreesboro. Before I get into an overview of the ordinance, I'd like to thank several people who had their hands in developing this ordinance and the amendments to these sections of the city code. It was, we received significant contributions from Melissa Wright and Anna Stovall in the Finance Department, Glenn Crisman and David Hudgens in the Police Department, and together with Susan McGannon, the six of us put together this ordinance that is before you tonight. And it would not have been possible to present such a thorough ordinance without the significant contribution of these individuals and based on their experience enforcing the city's current beer ordinance. This ordinance is probably the first significant revision to the city's beer ordinance in over 25 years. The amendments being presented to the council tonight is the product of a comprehensive examination of the manner in which beer is regulated in the city of Murfreesboro and in other municipalities throughout the state, from the permitting process through the enforcement of the ordinance provisions, through the suspension or revocation of beer permits, and the levying of civil monetary penalties. There are probably three main reasons why, or there are three reasons why we are presenting this ordinance amendment to you this evening for your approval. The first is, as I mentioned, it's been many years since there's been a significant review of how we do things in the city with respect to regulating beer and issuing beer permits. Second is that there have been significant changes in the way the state regulates the sale of beer in the, that have been passed by the General Assembly and signed to law by the governor in the past decade. In fact, in the past 10 years, there have been new laws adopted affecting the sale of beer that have been passed in every year except 2007. So part of what the goal of this ordinance is to bring the current enforcement mechanisms up to date with those that are available to us under state law. And then the third is simply to improve the way that we are regulating the manufacture, distribution, and sale of beer in the city based on experience under the current ordinance. There are some of the significant revisions contained in this ordinance are outlined in the cover letter that was presented with the ordinance. The first is the creation of seven types of beer permits. Currently, the city operates, has only two beer permits. There is a general overall beer permit and a special event permit. The trend in jurisdictions throughout the state has been to break these down into different types of beer permits, and that's what this ordinance does. Creates one for a manufacturer, one for a distributor, one for on-premises retail, one for off-premises retail, one for combined retail, which means that that, a permit holder, holding that type of permit could both sell beer for on-premises and off-premises consumption, a special event permit, and a caterer permit. And the specific characteristics of those permits are outlined in detail in the ordinance. Another thing that this ordinance does is requires all applicants to submit to a fingerprint-based criminal background check through the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation's Tennessee Application Processing Service. This is TAPS. The cost of this fingerprint-based criminal background check is borne by the applicant. Under the current ordinance, well, take a step back, the use of this fingerprint-based criminal background check is authorized specifically for cities to use in connection with beer permit applications. Currently, the cost of background checks that are run in connection with a beer permit application are borne by the city. Under this system, it'll be shifting that cost to the applicant. Another significant revision is updating the ordinance's permit suspension and revocation provisions, bringing them into compliance with current Tennessee state law, including the Responsible Vendor Act of 2006. The city had not taken action to implement the Responsible Vendor Act of 2006, which is not uncommon. There are many jurisdictions in the state that have not done that. It was not something that we were required to do, but it is something that we're taking, we're suggesting that the city adopt under this ordinance. Basically, the Responsible Vendor Act requires that permit holders, as well as the clerks who are selling the beer, get special training with respect to preventing or minimizing the sale to underage individuals. Again, in accordance with state law, this ordinance would allow for the imposition of civil monetary penalties as an alternative to permit suspension. Again, to bring the ordinance in line with current state law, the ordinance would require the city to notify the Tennessee Alcohol Beverage Commission of the suspension or revocation of any manufacturer or retail, on-premises or combined retail permit. And likewise, there's a reciprocal responsibility that upon notification by the Alcohol and Beverages Commission, the city will be required to conduct a hearing if a permit, requiring a permit holder to show cause why the permit holder's permit should not be suspended or revoked where the commission has suspended the permit holder's liquor-by-the-drink license. So there, it's, those two changes are increasing the reciprocal and cooperative enforcement efforts of state and local authorities. One of the big changes in this ordinance is providing for the adjudication of issues relating to the suspension or revocation of permits and/or the issuance of civil monetary penalties by a hearing officer. Let me give you some background here on this topic. Under state law, city councils have the authority to either establish a beer board or continue to serve, or designate themselves the city council as the city's beer board. Currently, and even, and under the proposed ordinance, city council is the beer board. What this ordinance does is continues the city council's role in issuing and approving permits. But what it, what it does is it kind of, it separates, delegates the beer board's authority to hear issues relating to suspension, revocation, and monetary penalties for permit holders that have violated the ordinance to a hearing officer. Currently, much of that work is being done by the city recorder's office, and that's how it's set up in the current ordinance. But these matters often become complicated and are sometimes would require knowledge, detailed knowledge of the law with respect to procedural and evidentiary issues. And so what we're proposing as an alternative to coming before the beer, or the beer board, the city council sitting as the beer board, and having a hearing on whether a beer permit should be suspended or revoked, is having that hearing before a hearing officer. That hearing officer would be a licensed attorney, and our kind of practical proposal would be to have some of the lawyers who currently serve as hearing officers for the disciplinary review board to also serve in the capacity as a beer board, or a beer board hearing officer. And the rate of compensation for those hearing officers would be the same in both capacities. And the decision of one of the hearing officers, and whether that was a suspension, a revocation, or the imposition of monetary penalties, would not come, would be final at the city level. It would not come to appeal. There would not be an appeal to city council. Instead, the appeal would be to circuit court under procedures set forth in state law. Finally, the ordinance brings the current, or the amendment brings the ordinance's current regulations concerning nudity and sexually explicit entertainment where beer is sold for on-premises consumption, in line with what is article, currently Article IV's more general regulations on the same matters, and makes all of those regulations more consistent with state law. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you have with respect to any aspect of the ordinance. Two items that we identified in the letter to council that this proposed ordinance does not address, but is something that the city is permitted to do under state law, are, the first is the creation of location restrictions on the sale of beer. Currently, the city does that with respect to liquor, both in, both it creates distance requirements for packaged liquor stores, as well as establishments that sell liquor by the drink. Those distance requirements apply to churches and schools. The other thing is, it does not specifically regulate beer growlers sold for off-premises consumption. Staff is not taking a specific stance on, or is not taking any position on whether council should decide to regulate any of those two, those two areas. But just in interest of full disclosure, I wanted to let you know that those are areas that are permitted, that cities are permitted to regulate under state law.
Any questions for Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Tucker, does this bring us in compliance as well with the wine and grocery stores, or is this, is this completely independent of that?
It's completely independent of that, and I think it should be, on that point, one thing to clarify, although there has been some confusion about this, it does, as you may be aware, liquor stores are now, under state law, authorized to sell beer. That state license specifically allows them to sell beer. They do not have to get an independent, or a separate beer permit for the city to do that. It's a little confusing, because if you're selling liquor by the drink at a restaurant, or a tavern, or a hotel, you still need to get a local beer permit. But if you're just, if you're selling, if you're selling beer and, or wine and liquor at a package store, and you want to start selling beer, you go through the state to get permission to do that.
So you don't have to come to the city?
You don't have to come to the city.
Rather than the city?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there, I can, a full, we've been comprehensive, and we are up to date through the 2015 General Assembly in terms of what is required of us under state law. But I can't, I can't promise you that I won't be back here in a year or 18 months, given the, saying we need to make another revision because of state law, because of the number of beer and alcohol-related provisions and bills that have been going through the General Assembly over the last few years.
And I guess I should say thank you to Melissa Wright again for her explanation on beer growlers in the last conversation. Her definition of it, I'll be thankful forever for, so.
Any questions?
Here are no questions. I move for approval of, on first reading, the request.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Kells Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Well, consider for passage, thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you.
Consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15032, amending Chapter 33, Water and Sewer, Section 33-1 of the Murfreesboro City Code, dealing with the minimum monthly water and sewer allowances and minimum monthly sewer charges. Mr. Gore?
Mayor, council members, thank you again for the opportunity to come for you tonight.
Mayor, council members, thank you again for the opportunity to come for you tonight. I've been in front of you the past few months, and actually maybe the past couple of years, kind of going through the department's five-year rate design in conjunction with the advanced metering infrastructure project that was approved back in February, and the department's cost of service, five-year pro forma. This rate ordinance is identical to what was approved last year, and I will be coming forward with a presentation on the rate design when I have my upcoming draft budget review. I've given you some tables via email, and I've got some that I can hand out if you would like me to broadcast those and go through some of the rate design elements. I'd be happy to do that for this ordinance. However, since I believe the upcoming presentation will cover that, I would just request your approval for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to new business, and we'll hear from Mr. Steve Sax, the general manager or CEO, with regards to the MED and your report. Mr. Sax?
Mayor and council, good evening, and thank you for your time, thank you for your support. I come, come visit with you once a year and give you a quick synopsis of where we are with Murfreesboro Electric. If you'll follow with me, you have a copy of my presentation I'm going to go through pretty fast and probably skip a few pages, but I'll hold, I'll hold the end for questions. Murfreesboro Electric is your electric utility company here. We have had a great number of years financially and with customer growth. Currently, we have 686 circuit miles. We increased eight miles of circuits last year. Pole attachments with AT&amp;T Comcast remain about the same, and United Telephone. So those are our major renters of space. 138 new lights were put in last year. We are also in an aggressive program with both LED, testing LED lights and decorative lights. We've worked with the city and the council and the planning department last year on a new lighting design for neighborhoods that seems to be successful to this day. Plan increased about $12,000 from, I mean, yeah, $12 million, I'm sorry, from about $170 million to $180 million in '14. That's about a 7% growth that matches our growth of our customers. Some of our system improvements are listed here. I'd like to point out that we're continuing to build fiber optic network around the city. We've got about 20 miles of fiber optics now, connecting seven substations out of 13. We also are very pleased that we got to energize our MTSU substation. That was a major accomplishment for us in the last couple of years, and a great help to MTSU. That added 45 megawatts of capacity, and one of our fifth delivery points on our 46 system. System reliability is very important to all of us. It, it's one of the first questions we get every time we have an industrial prospect in town. Murfreesboro Electric shoots for a 5.9, 5.9's reliability. Last year, we were 4.9s and 99928, 99.9928. With that type of reliability, we were able to receive one of the top prestigious awards from the American Public Power Association. We've also applied for that this year and expect to receive it next week at their annual meeting in California. We demonstrate our commitment for highly reliable safety, high reliable system, a safe system, and we rank, out of 2,000 utilities, we rank about 80th in the work we do, based, based on a evaluation from our peers. Some of our system outages, can continue to work on those. Animals are still a problem, and overhead equipment failure, though those two categories continue to be our areas of work, and they amount for about half of our outages each Some of our financials, $162.5 million a year business. 80% of all of our revenues go back to TVA for power purchases, and 20% remain with us for our operations. Something the city's always interested in is our lieu of tax payments. We crossed over the $3 million line a couple of years ago, and we're estimating our next payment will be about $3,120,000, but we, we can't, Melissa, we can't really shoot that until we get our budget done, but that seems to be where we're headed. So Murfreesboro Electric returns about $4 million a year, both to the city and to the county. Some of our metrics, gigawatt hours increased 4.2% from 13 to 14. Our total customer growth was 2%. We're still one of the leading systems in the Tennessee Valley area for green power and green power sales. Both in '13 and '14, we've received a TVA award for top producers in, in our green power program. And we have a growing number of solar projects around town. I think some of you have seen them, hopefully you've all seen them, and that continues to be of interest to our customers, and we have inter-tie agreements with our customers in TVA. Some of our customer service work that we continue to do, we get requests often to infrared people's equipment because they're having load problems, they're having issues with power quality, power factor, energy advice, and energy efficiency, and we continue to provide those services free of charge to all of our customers. Some of our community involvement, many of you know the things we do throughout the year with Earth Day. We just had our Earth Day celebration, I guess, two weeks ago now, Public Power Week, Christmas Tree Lighting Program, Destination Rutherford. We serve on a variety of boards, and our people pay back to the community that we all live in. One of the things we got last year was our sustainability award from TVA. We were involved with the city in that, and we continue to work on our sustainability programs every day. A little of our matrix, Murfreesboro Electric is one of 2,009 utilities in the country, one of 155 in the Tennessee Valley region, and we rank, out of all the 155, we rank 16th in customer served, 15th in energy sales and revenue. The other chart shows a little of our growth, and you continue to see we're a healthy, growing company, as well as all of Murfreesboro. Some of the important achievements we've had this year, we had our first TVA compliance audit in about 10 years. They came in and spent a couple of months and went through all of our financials and all of our policies, and found no significant findings. One of the biggest things we've accomplished this year is a new software upgrade. That's covered all of our business activities, from accounting to customer service to engineering and operations, and we have that done and continue to look for new advances in that software. Today, this morning at 8:00, we had three of our meter technicians walk out the door with their new iPads. No more paper in our business anymore. They're reading meters, turning the meters on, turning meetings off, and reporting that back to our computer system through iPads. So there's no more two- or three-hour delay from when they read your meter to when we get the information. It's instantaneous over the wireless network. So that's, that's just a step out of things that we're continuing to bring to Murfreesboro. One of the things we've also done this year is our new customer portal. These are some statistics of how many people have signed up for it, and we've got about 15,000 to 16,000 of our 50,000 customers with access to our portal this, as of last month. Some things we'll, I'll be talking to you about next year when I'm here, is our new prepay system, which will allow customers that have trouble with their bills to manage their account through prepaying their bill instead of paying their bill after the effect. Where this is working around the country, it seems to be very successful. People can manage their account, they know exactly what they've spent every day, how much they need to put in their account to continue having some money on which to charge their electricity to. We're continuing to work on our outage management. Some of you have called me over the past few months about complaints with not being able to get through to our outage system. It's in, it's in transition from the old system to the new system, and we think this new system's going to be phenomenal, and particularly work well with smartphones, or mobile workforce, which I just talked about, and our new substation we're building on Bedard Sparkway. So that's a very annotated report. You've got the full report in front of you. I'll take a minute and answer any questions you might have. We can talk about the ice storm, we can talk about anything you want to talk about, so. It's awful quiet.
Steve?
Yes?
Thank you for keeping our lights on.
Certainly.
You do a fantastic job, and I know people are going to be very quick to respond and call you when the lights go out, but I have breakfast each morning with a gentleman who works in your department, and my greeting for him each day is, "Thanks for keeping the lights on last night." And it, I know we take it for granted sometimes how good a job you really do, and we, we are really thankful for the job that you perform.
Councilman Smotherman, I appreciate it, and I'll be sure to pass it along to all of our folks. And Mayor, thank you for serving on our board. We appreciate having you this year, and if there's no other questions, I'll be ready to answer your phone calls when you need me.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. We'll consider recommendations of the assistant city manager. Mr. Crumlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Four bids were received on April the 16th for maintenance and repair work at Bradley Academy. If you remember back in November, you commissioned Lyle Lynch from Johnson &amp; Bailey Architects to do an analysis of the building. At that time, we were incurring a lot of water inside the building. What Lyle found is that the 20-year-old roof was in need of replacement. The front door of the building, subject to the weather, also was in need of repair and replacement. There were other issues with the building of windows and minor electrical. All went into the bid specs that were extended. Four bids were received. We're recommending to you tonight the low bid of BB&amp;T Contractors of Murfreesboro at a price of $112,500. Mr. John Callow had found $113,000 in his community development budget available to go towards the work on the building, so we believe the construction costs are covered. Be glad to try to answer any questions.
Pretty good bids.
Need a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
We'll retreat.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Mayor, the city also took proposals for our advertising and legal notices that we publish in the newspapers. We're recommending to unite the response from the Murfreesboro Post. The original bids went out in January of this year. There was an addendum to that, that neither one of the papers responded to, so those bids were nullified. We went back out on March the 5th. Bids were received on March the 24th. Three-person evaluation team of Alan Bozeman, our communications director, Althea Pimsel, our purchasing director, and myself reviewed the proposals. Criteria included the background of the firm, the circulation and demographics of their statistics, reference checks, cost of the advertisements, and their non-print presence. The internet's becoming more and more popular as a place for us to do our purchasing advertisements and legal notices. Both, we found both proposers had significant experience in the business. We found that the cost of the reader was slightly lower than that of the Post, but when we looked at the other criteria, the three evaluators working independently all came back with the Post as their recommendation. Be glad to try to answer any questions.
Jim, could you explain to us, I understand the circulation issue, but, or possibly concern, is it normal for us not to go with the low bid?
When we put together proposals like this, councilman, we tend to include a lot of factors. Cost in this particular proposal was weighted at 25%. I think all three of the raters found and pointed the reader positively in that cost rating. There were other factors in the criteria that the Post seemed to outweigh, though, and when the total points were considered, the Post was substantially ahead of the reader.
Could you give us some examples of the criteria that were, were used as far as, was it personal opinion, or was it a written criteria that says you do this or you don't do that?
We had written criteria. For instance, the Post had a slight advantage to the reader in that the Post employs reporters, including an assigned city hall reporter. The reader from the three samples they provided us appear to use stringers and news services for the news that goes into their newspaper. The print runs of the two papers and their delivery points are almost identical. However, the Post uses actual audits of their circulation. The reader's reports were directly from the paper with no validation of those reports. The content of the reader and the three samples they provided us had no stories or news about the city of Murfreesboro, our activities, or our businesses, whereas the Post routinely publishes city of Murfreesboro news releases and direct news from activities that they report from the city. The website of the Post was fully functioning, including current news since their Monday publication date. The reader's website was fully functioning, but when you go for news, it's a link to the WGNS website, and the news is recorded there. The Post is a member of the Tennessee Press Association, and as such, all of our advertisements are published on the internet statewide through the Tennessee Press Association site. The reader is not a member of the Tennessee Press Association, so that service was not available to us. Those are some of the examples of the criteria and how we scored the two proposals.
I guess I'm a little concerned the fact that we didn't include on the agenda that this would be one of the items that would be covered here tonight. I know there was a representative from the reader that was here earlier tonight, and he left because it wasn't listed on here that this was...
It's... Regular intended item.
You're right, you're right. I stand corrected. It, the...
It's in the packet, too. I have a quick question, and this is just for my input. You know, looking at the publications that we have in the community, do we know why the Daily News Journal did not bid?
We don't. I think to hazard a guess, it's probably the cost of publishing in the D&amp;J is not competitive with either the Post or the reader. I think when the city chose to move its print advertising some, now, I guess, six years ago, seven years ago, that was pretty much done on a cost basis then, and it was difficult for the D&amp;J to be competitive on cost at that time.
Any other questions?
I guess my concern would be the fact that we didn't go with the low bid. I mean, to me, I read both the papers, I find both of them to be newspapers of general circulation in our community, and to me, I think the subjective part of it is probably not, not what I would consider completely fair. completely fair, but at the, but, but, but both are very good papers of circulation. As far as the information that I get through the news of WGNS, they do a fantastic job. Bart Scott down there do a fantastic job of their news publications. They're probably one of the most reactive and immediate responses to the media as far as what's going on locally of anybody that I know of. And both of them, when I look at their stands on the, out in the restaurants and, and locations that they have where they distribute them, generally, both stands are pretty well empty. And I know they fill them up on a weekly basis, so. But that's, that's just me.
You ready for motion? Mayor, may we accept the recommendation of the Assistant City Manager for proposals for advertising and legal notices?
Sir?
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
No.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll consider recommendations of the City Attorney with regards to the Employee Handbook, Section 1042, attendance in extreme weather.
Mayor, members of council, this is a proposed new section to the employee handbook that would make explicit the authority of the City Manager to change the attendance requirements due to extreme weather or other unusual circumstances in terms of making explicit his ability to have a late start time, early departure time, or to make attendance optional if employees felt that travel was treacherous, for example. And it spells out what the options are for them if they are a non-exempt employee to use vacation time or accrued comp time to stay home. It does not provide for the making up of time if they are without vacation time or comp time, and for exempt employees to be unpaid or to use vacation time. And it spells out that which happens if, if the City Manager should make such a decision that the information is to be communicated as quickly and as widely as possible. So it's not substantively different from what we've done in the rare circumstances when this has happened before, but we did think because there was concern about it, and we did have a spate of bad weather this year, we thought it would be better to make it explicit, and that's what this does. Might be happy to answer any questions.
No questions, I move for approval.
Seven.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll now consider recommendations of the Assistant City Attorney with regards to alternate financial services, AFS businesses.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. Want to first make sure it's clear that we're, we're not presenting anything tonight that's to be voted on in terms of substance. We want to discuss this and get some policy guidance from council of where you would like to go with this next. There had been some discussion and some suggestions that the legal department take a look at the possibility of enacting some regulations on the businesses that are, have been called alternative financial services. These would include check advance, cash advance businesses, check cashing services, flexible credit businesses, industrial loan and thrift services, pawn shops, and title loans. Now, all of these are licensed and regulated by the State Banking Commission. They are all legal businesses in Tennessee, and there are, of course, a number of them in, in the community. The, you know, I've taken a look at the Tennessee licensing provisions. I've been through all them. I certainly cannot say I'm an expert on them or that I understand all the details of them. The interest rates, charges that can be made, insurance, they might require a person to have, almost all of those things are covered by state law. We would not be able to add any further regulation, any change to what interest they can charge a borrower, or how they would compute it, or what services they can charge for. If we were to do anything, I think we would be, we would have, I think, a reasonable, it's my belief that we would have a reasonable right to regulate the location of the businesses. That would be to some, both by zoning district. I think, for instance, we could certainly, as we already would at this time, we could, you know, they're not going to be allowed in a residential zone. And I think we could pick amongst our business and office and commercial zones and say they're allowed in some and not in others. For instance, a commercial highway zone, but maybe not in a commercial fringe zone that is more likely to be close to a neighborhood. I think we could put locational restrictions on them in terms of distance regulations, that they would have to be a certain distance from each other, and, and perhaps even from a residential use, and perhaps from other uses, too. I have to point out, however, that these would be zoning changes, and under our state law, Chapter 17, Section 1732, no, I can't even say the number. Anyway, the state grandfather law, 137208, none of our changes would affect businesses that are legally in place today, and as far as I know, all of them that are open today are legally in place. And so they would be able to stay. The regulations would only apply to new businesses that were attempting to open. In 2010, Congress passed the Dodd-Frank Wall Street Reform Act. Part of that included establishing a Consumer Financial Protection Bureau that, among other things, is to look at a variety of consumer, of the laws that affect consumers. That Bureau has had a bit of a rocky start. There's been a lot of contention over who was going to be the chairman, and there is now a chairman finally established, and that Bureau is proposing some federal regulations that would apply to all of these businesses. That Bureau specifically prohibited from regulating the interest rates. One of the things they are looking at, kind of as a follow-on to the mortgage rule changes that have come after the mortgage crash, is requiring these businesses to make a judgment, more of a judgment than that they're apparently now required to do, as to whether a potential borrower has the ability to repay the loan. With the federal rulemaking process, it's going to be a while before we see those rules. And can't say for certain that anything will ever actually come from that, from that process, but they are now working through their small business review process, and that is ongoing. There are other Tennessee cities that have taken some action with regard to these. Our neighbor to the north, Smyrna, set up a distance separation requirement, and also a limitation on which of the business zoning districts the, these businesses could go into. Metro Nashville also adopted zoning restrictions, and they adopted a restriction limiting the size of a business to 2,500 square feet. Chattanooga's adopting distance regulations, and they are also requiring all of these businesses to have a special use permit. And I'm advised that Knoxville has recently asked its planning commission to study the issue and make some recommendations. The, so what, what we're asking tonight is for you to, you council, to let us staff know if you want us to continue working on a, a city regulation of these businesses, and if so, then to, I guess, direct us as staff to continue the effort and to work with the planning commission to do additional study and come back to you with the recommendation. I had adopt, I presented with my memo a draft of an ordinance. This is, well, it, it's not, it's not ready to go to planning commission. There, there are some, some work to be done on it, but if you have looked through it, it would give you an idea that we are of the, the distance locations, separation requirements, and which zones we would, are thinking at this point that they would, would be appropriate for these businesses to, for new businesses to come into. It seems that lately there has been a significant increase, and this is not from an empirical study, but it seems that several new ones have popped up fairly recently. And one of the considerations has been that perhaps if, if council wants to, wants staff and planning commission to pursue a study, a possibility that council might want to put a moratorium on new businesses, new alternate financial services businesses. I have prepared one, which actually probably should have been passed out when I first started, the suggestion would be that if, if council is, does want us to pursue a study and to continue, that it may be appropriate to put a six-month moratorium on new businesses that would, in order to give us time to, to determine whether we want to place some restrictions on them.
Any questions for Mr. Ives?
If you did a moratorium, what all business, businesses would it affect? Wouldn't it affect not only payday lenders?
As the resolution is drafted, it would, it would apply to the cash advance businesses that are regulated by, these are all Title 45, the banking chap, by Chapter 17 of Title 45, check cashing businesses that are Chapter 18 of that title, the flexible credit businesses which are Chapter 12, industrial loan and thrift businesses which are Chapter 5, pawn shops which are Chapter 6, and title loans which are Chapter 15. And again, all of those are Title 45 of the banking, financial title of TCA. So it would affect, it would affect all of those businesses. I know that a number of the businesses that are open operate under more than one license, so they might be a check cashing and a cash advance. And there's at least one pawn shop I know of that is, from their ads, that advertises that they do cash advance and check cashing also. So you might have one shop with two, three, or four, or more of these businesses operating, you know, all operating there under the different licenses from the...
I believe Metro was also trying to write an ordinance to limit the times of operation. Were they successful doing that?
My understanding is they were not. I know that that was proposed for, they were going to prohibit the ones that are open 24/7. And I, that, that ordinance did not pass.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's any continuing effort to do that, but when it was proposed, it did not pass.
Well, I know Senator Ketchin has some legislation that he, that he, he put in sort of kind of the last minute, right before they were, you know, leaving the session, which will probably come back up next, next January for the next session. You're correct. You know, the federal government with that commission you were talking about, and at the state level, if anything is to be done to curtail the business practices. The business practices are really what, what the real problem is, as far as how many loans and time of loans and the rates and the cap on, how many loans and all that kind of good stuff. Unless that's implemented at the federal or state level, then these businesses, they're going nowhere. But if, you know, all we're doing is just moving them somewhere else or curtailing where they can go. But, so I want, I'm saying it for the public's knowledge that as, as much as we all are probably concerned about the business practices, that's the major cover with those type of businesses, the business practices, that align people to get loans and strain them along with high interest rates and, and put them in positions where they, they'll never pay them back.
That does happen, and there's a number of reports about those kinds of activities. And I'm certain that not all of the businesses conduct themselves that way, but apparently a number do. I'm not aware of any personal, we have not studied this as a researcher would locally to, to go find out, you know, are there people that have been trapped here in Murfreesboro? Probably, but I don't know that, and we haven't made that study, so.
I wouldn't.
But there are, seems to be a growing business phenomenon. There are several states that ban them completely. The Department of Defense has enacted a rule
Right.
that says that one of these lenders cannot charge an active, and I think it includes reservists, too, but at least an active-duty service person cannot be charged an APR over 36%.
You've done your homework.
And when you calculate the APRs on some of these, they come out to 5, 6, 700%. You know, if, if it's $20 a week, that doesn't sound like a lot of money, but if you roll that a few times, and then you add some service fees, and then you add something else, all of a sudden, that, that factors into the APR, the annual percentage rate, as opposed to the just, the declared percentage rate, it, it gets, it gets high in a hurry.
We live in a capitalistic country. If there was no demand, they wouldn't be here, so.
That's also correct.
I think that's where, looking at, when we talk about demand, and I'm more of a free market, you know, I think you, it is a slippery slope when you start going through and saying what businesses you do and you don't like. Because, you know, so, but at the same time, I think you also have to look at what our neighbors are doing. And when you see that Smyrna, Mount Juliet, Nashville, Knoxville, Chattanooga, a lot of the cities that are either comparable to us or our size are, are putting restrictions on these types of businesses, what happens when we talk, we're actually creating demand by not putting any regulation, because people are going to go where it's easiest.
Right.
And so that's the part where I'm struggling, that you drive from Clark Boulevard to one block on Northfield, and there's, last count, 12 of those facilities that are, that are there. And so the, the other part, I guess my second part, a lot of these businesses are going in, what I would say, older strip centers in different areas, and just for us to be able to promote, and this is something we're talking about on the 2035 plan, we're really promoting redevelopment, we're really promoting, looking at Broad Street, looking at Memorial, looking at some of the older areas in town, and if we don't get a handle on some of the things that are going into those areas, we're not ever going to be able to promote economic development and redevelopment in those areas, because no person that is going to buy something and invest in a piece of property when the area next to them is not improving. So, you know, I'm, I, I look at it and say, I don't like... So, you know, I'm, I, I look at it and say, I don't like being in a situation where you have to regulate certain types of industries or businesses, but at the same time, you know, we end up, I think we have 71 financial, 79 financial institutions in Murfreesboro, 41 of them are in, are banks, then you have another 40, and you look at that in relation to our population, and that's a high number. So those are the things I'm really struggling with, and, you know, it's, we're right in the middle of this 2035 Plan, and that's some of the things that I look at to say, how can we, how can we improve? So my opinion, I think we, we, I don't know about the moratorium, I'd love to hear whatever, that's a, the M-word's a big word, but I definitely think this needs to be something that the Planning Commission needs to study from the zoning aspect, but that's just, I don't know, it'd be interesting to hear other people's thoughts.
You ready for my thoughts? Shane, you and I both kind of brought this on ourself, as far as, we both asked for this study, and David, you've done a fantastic job of gathering information and giving us a fantastic presentation. The, the problem I've got, and I'll go back to the comments that most, Mr. Washington and Mr. McFarland made, was we were trying to manipulate the free market by doing this. And we're not going to put a restriction or a moratorium on car lots, we're not going to put a restriction or a moratorium on liquor stores, we're not going to put a restriction or moratorium on grocery stores. And it does seem like we are targeting one particular market, which I particularly don't care for, but it doesn't mean that I've got the right, in my opinion, to control their business. At one time, I was always angry because there were too many people standing on the street corners saying, "We buy gold." As the market has drained itself, that market has basically taken care of itself, and we don't see that anymore. I, I think this is a condition that's caused by our economy. I think we have the responsibility, as the mayor mentioned, to create an environment in which our economy and businesses in our community can thrive. But I don't feel comfortable with us imposing restrictions even on distance between each other. I do, I do agree, I think that perhaps the Planning Commission could look at it, and maybe zoning would be appropriate, because I do think there are certain areas that are just inundated with this particular business, but, and, and I think that that would be a fair way of looking at it. But again, if, if we're going to grandfather in, which we don't have any choice, businesses that currently exist, then we just have to accept the fact that between Clark Boulevard and Northfield on Memorial, that we are going to have, basically all we're doing is stopping the free market from working, which would be a competitive market, which says supply and demand. If there wasn't a demand for it, there wouldn't be any, none of those stores would be in business. So, so there truly is a demand. I mean, I think the thing that we need to focus on, from, from our body standpoint, is to try and create an environment in which businesses can, can really be successful in our community. And, and, and I'm not sure that this is a step in that direction. I, I think it is trying to manipulate the, the free market, and so I can tell you right now, I'd be opposed to any regulation or resolution that would prevent the free market from operating in that manner.
So I think we need to decide which direction, if any, would, would the council like to, like to see us go. And I know we're not taking a vote on anything, but we've got, you know, several different options. We've got a moratorium option, we've got the option of doing nothing, we've got an option of sending it back to the Planning Commission and asking the Planning Commission to come up with, with some alternatives.
Do we, we don't presently, when someone requests a business license, do we have any regulation as far as, other than the zoning, to, to restrict their application?
There are a few distance limitations of, for example-
Schools, churches.
An adult-oriented business in the proper zone still has to be a certain, 1,000 feet away from churches, schools, and certain other things. I believe there is a 500-foot distance limitation for, was it for packaged stores or for packaged beer stores from churches? So there are some, but there's not, mostly it's a zoning question.
We have no ability to restrict the number of a particular business, do we?
I don't think we do. I think that some places have tried that. I don't, I think if challenged, they won't be successful. A lot of, there's been a lot of litigation with communities that have tried to prohibit the so-called big boxes, and while there's some ability to put some limitation and some restriction, I think that just say you're prohibiting it is, is questionable.
If a city has a particular area that is, and I'm, I'm kind of brainstorming, this is not a place to brainstorm necessarily, but maybe under this, under this occasion, it might require a little brainstorming. In a particular area of a community which is blighted or has, what is, is addressing a concern where redevelopment or investment dollars are, are, are not encouraged or restricted in that area, what, is there a particular kind of zoning within a zoning definition that they could restrict certain development, or is that going to be too specific? Or can, can you address, even under a particular zoning, the, the needs of a particular area? So if we had an area designated that, that needed redevelopment, could we restrict that that at this time could not receive any more of a particular kind of industry or a particular kind of business?
There is at least a possibility that that can be done. I know that Metro did a redevelopment area that was, that was not a zoning issue.
Right.
Because the problem you get in, if it's a zoning issue, then it's grandfathered under state law. But there is at least a possibility of creating a redevelopment district that is not zoning-
That was the thought that I was having.
-that could have that effect. I mean, I, and I'm aware of that because there was a billboard lawsuit, and the Court of Appeals said that this particular kind of redevelopment district was not zoning, and therefore they could, you know, the billboard company lost its right to expand that it would have had under, under the grandfather statute. I, I have not, I can find that and find out what kind of redevelopment that was, but it's, 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 you're gonna, you're gonna, it's gonna be kind of tricky to try to do that. Of course, if you get into a true urban renewal situation where properties are bought, then they can be redeveloped and, and, and changed.
And that's really what we're seeing, I think, more in successful communities. Mayor and I have had several meetings over the last two weeks for areas that might be needing some, some upgrade. You can look at a specially designated zone, and you offer the carrot, not the stick, to incentivize investment there. And there's a number of different ways to do that, and that'll be one of the things that we're going to look to study more next year.
Well, the 2035 Plan kind of pulled out of that, that a lot of infill and that we have to be directing, so I think some more further conversation before we get specific as to what, how we're going to address this. That might be, we need to chew on this bone a little bit longer, because I think it's an issue that we're, because of the limited number of areas that we have, and in a particular need in our community to infill into existing areas within our urban growth boundary, that we're going to have to address this anyway, so maybe we just need to chew on this a little bit more.
And the, the concept of an overlay zone is also something that can be looked at, but again, that's zoning, and so without a carrot, you know, you can't run out the person, the undesirable element that you, that's there with an overlay. You know, we recently, just a couple of years ago, adopted the city core overlay for the area east of downtown and south of Main Street, and, you know, most of that was to loosen up the restrictions, to encourage redevelopment growth, not to tighten restrictions-
Right.
...to prohibit certain kinds or types of things. Now, of course, because of zoning, it, it's not commercial highways, so, you know, you've already prohibited the, you know, the 20-acre used car lot because you're not, it's not zoned for that kind of thing. But, but again, generally that was to loosen restrictions, to encourage redevelopment, not to tighten it, but... There are several other things that I think we can work with Planning Commission on and try to formulate a recommendation, and the recommendation may be leaked alone, I guess, but certainly we, that's something I think staff, along with Planning Commission, can, can look at.
And, and I think what we're trying to do here is almost trying to unring the bell, because-
True.
-they're already established, they're already there, and for us to think that we're going to put a moratorium on it and it's going to improve the situation, I'm not sure that we'll get the results that we're looking for. I, I will say that we recently, the Planning Commission is currently working on some new sign ordinances, and when we talk about undesirable businesses, they're usually a practice that comes along with that business that makes them undesirable. And, and I think signage is one of the things that certainly in most neighborhoods, when we look at it, we go, this is the reason this business stands out. So, so those things we're already addressing, you know, whether or not you like a building that the roof has been painted orange or not, that, that might be addressable with a code as well, but, but I, I think that that's probably the, the better direction for us to go in, rather than just targeting, targeting a particular industry, because I, I think there's a solution to our problem that we've got, but restricting the free market, I don't think is, is, is ever a very good idea.
And frankly, the big, better solution is for all of us to lobby our legislators-
Absolutely, absolutely. It can be addressed at state level-
They will take a look at it.
And then every municipality will not be placed in this situation.
Right. So I don't know that we need a vote on this particular, I think I can take the message back to staff and Planning Commission that we're going to, we're going to look harder at some more issues and some potential solutions, and we'll come back to you when we have something.
Yeah, I think what, Mr. Ives, I think what would be good, in your, your resolution that you had put, you've got in that certain AFS businesses can have a detrimental effect on local property values, economic redevelopment can contribute to neighborhood blight, and especially if opened during late night, early morning hours, can contribute to an increase in criminal activity, and that says that the city is aware of reports and studies. So I think it'd be good to get those reports, because I think the moment where free market interferes with neighborhood property values and crime- public safety, that's where we have to step in on, on free market, so...
So you, would you, you'd like me to distribute some of those?
I think that'd be great, if we could, if we could read through some of those.
I will do that.
Okay.
I will do that.
Thank you, thank you for your hard work.
You're very welcome. I know a lot more about alternative finance than I ever thought I would.
You'll be ready to go to banking school. All right, you have several beer permit, beer permits that are in front of you. Ms. Wright?
We do. We have a convenience store ownership change at 4125 Manson Pike, Suite B, that has met our requirements for approval. We have a application in process for an ownership change for a convenience store at 2820 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, and we lack some codes inspections on that particular application. We have a restaurant replacing a current restaurant, so it's an ownership and name change, at 517 Casey Lane, Suite A, and they, we like some building codes inspections there. You will see several notations there on the background check, and my staff did follow-up that none of those would be cause for the need to deny the permit on, on moral turpitude or, or otherwise. We have two special event applications, one for St. Thomas Rutherford Foundation for a special event on 9/19/15, and another for the Chamber of Commerce for May the 13th, 2015. At this point, we recommend approval of these applications.
You just do them all at once?
It's up to you. Do you prefer to do them one at a time? No? Okay, all at once is fine.
Move for approval.
Ms. Wright, could I ask for you to explain to us what would be a reason, I mean, I think we're all probably looking at the same request here, and, and the list of violations that this particular requister has been charged with and found guilty of in several cases. What are the things that keeps you from being in the beer business if, if these violations don't?
Moral turpitude can be a fairly gray area to explain, and my expert has left for the night. Mr. Tucker just left. Susan, I'm sure, is quite, quite versed in this as well. I'm not sure if she's looked at this particular one beforehand or not, probably not. I believe we've worked with Mr. Tucker, as we had been working on the beer changes with him. I do know before, when I've asked, there are things like domestic violence and theft at a criminal level. Some of these may actually be defined in the first reading of the code changes we made tonight. I believe they were actually in the definitions, because we discussed some of them at the time we were going over it. So let me look at this real quick.
Generally, Mr. Smotherman, if there had been offenses involving an applicant who had sold to a minor, who had violated, you know, state laws relative to alcohol or beer, you know, that's a clear category by itself that would be disqualifying. You know, there's a factor as well in terms of the timeliness of the offense, in term, you know, our history may go back farther than what we would deem to be relevant under the proposed new ordinance, but the turpitude, moral turpitude is something that the General Assembly has not, in its wisdom, seen fit to, you know, give a certainty to, partly because they keep changing the criminal code, and so how you define something is whether or not it is or is not. But certain kinds of sexual offenses, certain kinds of violent offenses, and, and certain kinds of corruption offenses would be deemed to be moral turpitude more clearly than the misuse of, of alcohol while driving, which is the most recent predominant ones listed.
I did find the moral turpitude, as we, as we defined it in the new code section list, first or second degree murder, voluntary manslaughter, aggravated assault, domestic assault or abuse, kidnapping, false imprisonment, all sexual offenses, robbery, arson, burglary, money laundering, child abuse or neglect, bribery, the manufacturer, deliver, delivery, sale, or possession with intent to manufacture, deliver, or sell any Schedule I or II controlled substances as designated in Title 39, Chapter 17, Part 4 of the Tennessee Code, theft of property or services classified as a felony or included within a jurisdiction's two highest classifications of misdemeanors. So otherwise, it would be where you violated, violated state law, selling without a permit, selling after hours, selling to a minor, things like that.
All I know is he had a bad night on 4/22/2009.
Sure did, it did.
About two months later to the date, he had another bad night.
He did. He's got a problem. But, did you hear a motion?
I made the motion to accept them all.
Seven.
Have a motion, second.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
I can't say yes to that one.
Mr. Smotherman?
Abstain.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Ms. Wright, do we need to, Councilman Shacklet had voted to that one specific one, so I would, do we need to pull that one specific one out and then vote?
Yeah, we're kind of punishing everybody by not voting on the.
You can do that, certainly. It doesn't really matter if there, if it's going to pass as a group, if what his intent was, it would just be a no vote. You know, you can certainly make a different motion.
Yeah, but I don't think.
If you'll go ahead and vote, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve all of them with the exception of that one following your vote.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay. And I'll make a motion that they all be approved with the exception of Bob's barbecue.
Okay, excuse me, though. I mean, with the mayor's vote of aye, they were all approved.
They were all approved. Okay, you had enough votes?
Yeah, we had enough.
I tell you what, can I change my vote to abstain? And then that kind of clears that up, I think. That doesn't.
If you wish to change your vote, I think you still would have that option. It would not change the outcome.
I know, it doesn't change the outcome, but it makes it clear what, so I will abstain.
Okay. Ms. Gels Harris, do you?
No, I was abstaining.
You know what?
I was thinking we were pulling this one out.
Yeah. And I, I guess, listening, there's certain things we can and certain things that we can't do by what we're given the.
Well, if you had made the motion to pull them out before the motion was made and voted on, you could have done that. Traditionally, the council has voted on them as a block. If you had made a motion to pull them out and just deal with that one, I probably would have given you legal advice about the questionable decision that might be about to be made.
Okay. All right, we'll move to payments of statements.
I move we pay the bills.
Seven.
Have a motion, second. Ms. Wright, if I call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have two board and commission recommendations that we will vote in our next meeting. One is for filling a three-year vacancy on the Evergreen Cemetery Board, and this is for Ms., excuse me, is for Mr. David Hoover. And then also, we have a retirement in June on the Cable TV Commission for MTSU's representative. And Mr. Dennis O'Neill is retiring, and Roger Heinrich is recommended to take his position. So we will handle those. Yes, sir.
Let me make, Dennis O'Neill, I served with him. I want to say, and I, I learned a lot, a little small time I was on the cable commission, but he's, he has a lot of integrity. And I think that, I don't know the others on the commission, but I know he's been there a long time. And I'd like to thank him personally for serving and for doing what he's done, because he, he's, he was outstanding.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Washington. Okay, we'll move to other business, and you have a few items that are in front of you for some purchases. All right, Mr. Kirky? We have considered approval of temporary tarmac lease agreement with Air Methods.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and members of the city council. As you know, we're working with Air Methods on a facility out at the airport. In the meantime, they have expressed a desire to come onto the airport and position themselves so that they can operate out of Murfreesboro in a temporarily kind of fashion until their facilities are built. We've worked here on a temporary tarmac lease agreement here. The leased property is, is an area for their helicopter to park out on the ramp, and then some areas for their automobiles to park, and their trailers for their crew. The rent is $500 a month with a deposit and penalties for any late fees, and the term is really month to month while we work with them on their construction.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Kirky?
I move we approve the lease agreement.
Second. All right, motion, second. Ms. Wright, if I call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Crumley?
Mayor, I recognize that I'm the only thing standing between us going home, so this is gonna be quick. Three items for other business tonight. First is the purchase of fire hose. Staff has worked enough on preparation of the manager's proposed budget to have a very good understanding of where we believe we will finish fiscal year 15 at June 30. We are recommending that a number of items requested by departments in the next budget year be purchased prior to June 30th this year. The first of those is fire hose. This is replacement fire hose, but it is also an upgrade. The current fire hose is four inches in diameter, this hose is five inches in diameter. I'm not an engineer, because I couldn't pass calculus. I know that that increases the amount of water they can put through that hose greatly. So not only is this the replacement of the existing hose, it's a substantial upgrade to the performance. The cost of this hose is $67,000. We're recommending that we go ahead and purchase that prior to June 30.
We need to do these one at a time? Okay. You have this request in front of you?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Ms. Wright, if I call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Mayor and council, item number two is actually change order number one to the re-roofing and other work being done to the old solid waste building on Main Street. This is an addition of $7,430, but it actually includes a substantial add and a substantial deduct. On the add side is new conduit and electrical wiring for the bays, the equipment bays behind the building. What we discovered after the project began is that the old electric wire and conduit was embedded into the lightweight concrete roof of that structure. When the roof was removed, so was the electrical service. So $37,000 roughly of this is going to replace the electrical service in the equipment base behind the building. There were some other minor items on the addition side, including leveling plates for the roof structure, trim boards around the edge of the building to improve the appearance, and the removal of HVAC units on top of the building. The deduct is, at the city's request, we're removing two substantial pieces from the current contract. One of those is replacing HVAC in the building, the other is the construction of a commercial style entrance on the front of that building. So you have a $47,000 roughly add, a $39,000 deduct, total for this particular change order, $7,430.37.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, if I call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
And the third item is change order number two for the renovation work going on here in City Hall. This is the addition of air conditioning and heat in the conference room for the Human Resource Department at the cost of about $9,300, and the construction of an art closet. The city has acquired donations of a substantial amount of art over the years, and we lack space to store them. So for approximately $2,800, this would build a new closet for the storage of that artwork.
Okay, you have this.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, if I call the roll. We haven't voted on it yet, Mr. Crumley.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Any other business come before the city council? I want to remind everyone, have a special meeting Monday, 5:30?
In Council Chambers.
Council Chambers. Okay. Monday morning, 10 o'clock. Okay. All right, see nothing else, we'll stand adjourned.